It's Monday 13th of February, ten thirty in the morning. I'm councillor Ian Fleetwood. To my immediate right hand side, I've got my vice chairman. And further over, I have a committee, one or two spectators, which is excellent. In the middle of the room, we have the various democratic officers. We're not expecting a fire alarm this morning, so simply if you hear one going, please exit the building to the rear of me, out into the car park where we'll duly do a head count and make sure everyone's where they should be. I think the alarms have already been tested this morning on the trial alarm, so as is a norm for Monday morning. Similarly, there's water, I think everyone knows where the loos are, so we can dispense with all the other bits and pieces. So, moving on. Item one is apologies for placement members, I think we've got a couple of this morning.
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from councillor Austin, councillor Pepper, councillor Reed and councillor Smith. And councillor Carrington should be joining us later on this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. Item two is declarations of members' interests. Anybody wish to declare now? Obviously, you can at a later stage if you wish, you're in the meeting, seeing no movement. I'll therefore move on to item three, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the sixteenth of January twenty twenty-three. These have previously been circulated, I'm quite happy to move them, seconded by councillor Skinner. And assuming that nobody is indicating, councillor, okay, nobody's wishing to amend them or make any adjustments. So I'm quite happy to move on and assume that everyone is happy with that. Item four then, moving us on to traffic items. Four point one, Thelby A fifteen, proposed puffing crossing facility. So if I can have an officer introduction, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Joan Gibson, programme leader for Minor Works Traffic. The first report today relates to a puffing crossing facility on the A fifteen at Thelby. Next slide, please. So Thelby lies just to the south of Bourne. Next slide, please. So initially, a request came through for a crossing to the north of the crossroads in the centre of the village. An A fifteen creates quite a bit of severance between the two sides of the community. The location to the north didn't meet safety requirements in the stage one safety audit. So a further safety audit was carried out for a site to the south, as indicated at appendix B. And this was accepted. The pedestrian crossing survey gave as a result has allowed the construction of a pedestrian refuge. However, in the policy, where a score lies within ten percent of the next grade of crossing, which is a zebra, this committee can approve that upgrade. But given site constraints on the A fifteen in terms of speed limit and traffic flow, this committee can also approve a further upgrade of the crossing facility to a puffing crossing. So the recommendation is that a puffing crossing at this location is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll therefore open it to committee. Would anybody like to speak to the application? Vice chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. I know this area well, living locally, and would wholeheartedly support this recommendation. Thank you.
So you're therefore moving the recommendation?
Yes, I'm very happy to.
Thank you, okay. Councillor Skinner, please. Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, so proposed, seconded, all in favour, please show. That is unanimous. Excuse me. So I'll therefore move on to four point two, which is Sutton St Edmund, Broadgate and Cross Road. The proposed thirty mile an hour speed limit. Officer introduction, please.
Thank you. So this relates to a proposed thirty mile an hour speed limit on Broadgate and Cross Road at Sutton St Edmund. Next slide, please. So we carried out speed surveys on Cross Road and Broadgate. Cross Road, the mean speed at twenty-five met the criteria for thirty mile an hour limit. The two surveys on Broadgate were slightly above the threshold and can be considered as a borderline case. So the recommendation to committee is that they consider this as a borderline case and approve a reduction of the existing forty mile an hour limit here to thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it to committee. I do know that I've received an email from councillor Pepper saying how he supports the scheme. So therefore, seeing nobody wishing to speak, I'm quite happy to propose the recommendation. Councillor Ashton, you would like to?
Happy to second.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak? Okay, proposed and seconded, all in favour, please show now. Again, that's unanimous, thank you very much. So that one is also as printed. Moves us on to four point three, Gonnaby Hill foot, Gonnaby Road and Stevenson Avenue at Grantham. Officer introduction, please.
Thank you. This report considers proposed waiting restrictions and bus stop clearways. Next slide, please. So this is the B eleven seventy-four between the A one and Great Gonnaby and the centre of Grantham. It's a busy road. And, next slide, please. Excuse me. The proposal relates to proposed waiting restrictions as shown in blue at appendix B and bus stop clearways. This is to manage on-street parking, which obstructs the junctions with Pretoria Road and Stevenson Avenue, and visibility coming out of those junctions. We've had three objections to the proposal. There's concern of the impact on the Kimberley Terrace and Lady Smith Terrace opposite, that this will impact on their ability to park. Some of the residents are disabled and there's concerns that they will have to park remotely from their properties. The objections are noted, but we feel that these restrictions are needed in order to maintain traffic flow and clear visibility out of Stevenson Avenue, which serves a large residential area to the north. There is alternative areas to park to both the north and south of this site. And it's therefore recommended that the objections are overruled so that we can introduce the order. Thank you.
Thank you. So committee, who would like to speak, please? I've travelled along this road a little bit myself over time, and I do know the location. I'm quite happy to move the recommendation. Councillor Skinner.
Yes, I, like you, have travelled through this area and noted the parking issues. And I'm quite happy to second it if you'll move it, Chair.
Thank you. I understand, you know, local members who know this area well have come to that conclusion about traffic flow, and nobody likes congestion. But I just would like to raise the normal, you know, it's the usual dilemma. Do we take care of people who live in the area and want to be able to get to their, you know, especially if they're disabled? Or do we take care of people wanting to pass through? And I know this is, it's an ever-ending dilemma, but I do see that one in front of us here. Thank you.
So is there any comment from the officer at all? We, obviously, we have to do, it's a fine balance between the two. We just have to take into account the needs and the movement of the traffic.
Yes, I think with there being alternative areas to park nearby, comfortable with the proposals, and also blue badge holders can park on single and double yellow lines for up to three hours where it's safe to do so. So should that be necessary, that can, that can happen.
Okay, so seeing no further speakers, proposed and seconded, all in favour, please show. And again, that is unanimous. No, it isn't. It's one, those in favour was the majority, those against, one, and any abstentions, none. So we have one against, so it isn't a clear, it is a clear majority, but it isn't unanimous for the sake of anybody that's listening to us on the net. So, okay, even though we have a clear majority, that is carried and it will be put into place as printed. Right, so which moves us to four point four, which is Edison Court at Pinchbeck.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So this is a revisit to a report that we brought to the committee on the ninth of May last year. Next slide, please. At that committee, it was resolved to review the proposals here and the traffic issues that they're designed to solve after, for a period of six months. And we have visited the site again on a number of occasions and found that despite alleged potential changes to business ownership in the area, which might mean that these restrictions aren't necessary, we've found that the same problems still exist. And therefore, we are recommending that the objections received and outlined in the report, appendix C from the last committee, that these are overruled and that the order is introduced. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for taking it back and processing the data again so that we've got another update. So, committee, how do you feel about this one? Obviously, we've seen this one before. Councillor Ashton.
Thank you. Once again, grateful for the effort to go away and relook at this after the previous visit to committee, which I'm pleased to say has happened, and seeing the outcome and conclusion of that and report in full. I'm very happy to move the recommendation, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Skinner.
Quite happy to second.
No further speakers. So as printed, proposed by councillor Ashton, seconded by councillor Skinner, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Those against? Abstentions, one abstention. So therefore, that is carried and will be put into place. Thank you. That brings us to the end of the traffic items. I'm quite surprised, well, in some respects, I'm very happy that everything's gone through smoothly and the officer's work has been appreciated. So thank you for the efforts you've put in. I'll therefore move on to item five, which is county matters applications, and five point one, which takes us to Coningsby, Bed Farm across Keys Lane. So an officer introduction, please.
Thanks, Chairman. Good morning, members. My name's Mark Willis and I'm the applications manager, and I'll be doing the presentation this morning. Yeah, so this application is a report bringing back an item that was heard by the committee back in November. It's for a expansion to an existing irrigation pond at Coningsby. The report, you'll see, will see that when the report was first considered, officers had recommended refusal on the basis of the applicant's failure to demonstrate that got an abstraction licence from the Environment Agency. That is a prerequisite requirement of the policy that these proposals will be considered in the local plan. There had been some difficulties in the applicant getting access to the Environment Agency in terms of making that licence, and so consequently, the committee resolved to agree a three-month extension back in November on the basis that we would then reconsider the application, hoping that a licence had been received. Unfortunately, that's not been the case. In the interim period, the applicant has been in contact with the agency, has made an application, although the Environment Agency have notified and officers have seen evidence of, an email from them advising that due to backlog, they're taking on average eight months to process an abstraction licence. And as a consequence of that, and again, it being a prerequisite requirement for officers to grant planning permission for this, the applicant's unable to satisfy the requirements at this time. However, given the circumstances and officers understand that this is beyond the control of the applicant, we felt it pertinent to bring the report back to committee and ask for a further extension of time with the committee to agree to a further extension of time for the applicant to seek that licence. And in the event that that licence is issued, delegated powers for the officers to grant permission. So the recommendation in the report is that twofold, to seek a further extension of time till October this year, which should give sufficient time for the agency to deal with the application for the licence. And if in the event that that's received, within that timeframe, for officers to determine the application on the delegated powers. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We have no speakers for this, so I'll open it to committee and I'll take councillor Ashton.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. As the local county councillor for this part of the world, I remember very well the last time this came to committee. And I think as we determined at that time, if this is something which is outside of the applicant's control, then it'd be unreasonable for us to refuse permission on this occasion, appreciating that the Environment Agency has its backlog to work through and assuming that that results in a successful licence, then the permission, the reason for the application are sound for permission. So I'm very happy, Mr Chairman, to move the recommendation to print it on page thirty-nine. Happy to second, Chair.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, so proposed by councillor Ashton, seconded by councillor Skinner, that the recommendation as printed is taken forward and we got the permission. All in favour, please show us. That is unanimous, thank you. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Seeing none. That is therefore carried through as printed. Next one is five point two, change of use of redundant courier transportation business at Spalding. So officer introduction, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So yes, this application, just bring the slides up, please. So as I say, this application takes us to Gosbiton Clough, a proposed change of use of a redundant workshop and land which had been formerly used as a transport courier and engineering business to an end-of-life vehicle dismantling facility. Just in terms of the slide, this gives you a bit of context to the site's location. It sits on a crossroads between High Fen and Clough Road, which is the B one three nine seven. That's just to the north of the site there, running across the page, and Beck Bank, just to the west. It's approximately three miles south-west of Gosbiton. And the A sixteen, again, just for context, is about five miles to the east. And, sorry, A sixteen, five miles to the east, and A fifteen, around six miles to the west. If you can have a sight, next slide, please. This is just a bit more of a zoomed-in image there to give you an idea of the site. The proposal site is the site edged in red there, and comprises of an existing building and yard area. The land to the south, which is highlighted in blue, is in the same ownership. And that comprises of the former old shipping, which is now a private residence, along with the annexed building, which is also a private residence, again, in the same ownership as the proposal site. In terms of the proposal, as I say, it's, the intention is to operate a end-of-life dismant, car dismantling business on the site, which could provide for bringing vehicles onto the yard, temporarily storing them in the yard prior to taking them into the building where brake fluids, fuels and parts would be dismantled, with temporary storage of empty carcasses back in the yard prior to dispatch further elsewhere. Can I have a next slide, please? The proposal site itself lies within the settlement, defined settlement boundaries of Gosbiton Clough. Just, it's on, as you would look on that, the western edge there is the proposal site. You can see highlighted within the development boundaries. So there is a principle or an expectation of development, redevelopment of this plot. Next slide, please. These are just some images to give members a bit of a feel for where the site sits. So the first top image is a view from Beck Bank, the property. The old shipping is the white building you can see there, which as I say is residential property. The yard is just to the north of that, and we have residential properties on the opposite side of Beck Bank. The lower picture is an image of the frontage of the site, and you can see the existing workshop buildings there and the yard area. Next slide, please. Again, sites, previous use, there is still materials on the site that you can see. It's from a previous use, it's not associated with this development that is proposed, it's yet to commence. But you can, this gives you an image of what the site looks like currently. Next slide, please. This is the workshop building that's present on-site. Next slide. And again, you can see the site's been left in pretty poor condition, materials stocked on the yard. Again, the shipping just in the background there, you can see is the closest and associated property with the site. Next slide. Again, a few more images. Next slide, please. So the photograph on the left there is the western boundary, that front on to Beck Bank. And again, we've got images, this is, the one on the right is looking from the site across Beck Bank to the property that's opposite the site. And you'll see referencing the report to gaps that exist within the site boundary on the western edge, and that's the area that's identified there. Next slide, please. So this just gives a bit of a context of the actual operations as proposed. As I say, the principle is to bring materials into the gate off the B road to the north to utilise the dismantling operations within the existing shed with a bit of external storage for the storage of both incoming and outgoing vehicles prior to dismantling. The proposal includes provision of new security fencing around the site, widening of the existing access, and providing a fence line also between the shipping property to the south and the property itself. We'll come on to this, but you'll see within the report, recommendation is in addition to security fencing, whilst the intention is that the operator of this site would live in that property that we provide or recommend that a close-boarded fence also be erected along that southern boundary to act as both a visual screen but also provide some separation between the two uses. And then just quickly on the western, southern extent there, you'll see there's some proposed new plant in, infill planting to fill up in a gap that currently exists in that area. So taking it to the report, as I say, the application sets out the operations in detail and the proposed hours of operation on pages sixty-six. It's effectively a small-scale operation, which we've seen before, members will be familiar with. In terms of the consultations, we've had eleven representations received from local residents in around the locality of raised objections to the proposal. I won't go through those in detail, but they are summarised on page seventy-five. And those matters include potential impacts such as visual impact, noise pollution, concerns about light, odour and smell, concerns about discharge and pollutants. There is a water course that runs to the south of the site, so some concerns regard that. And highway safety in particular, traffic using the B one three nine seven, which contains a school further to the east and stops, bus stops along its route. In terms of consultations, no objections in principle have been received from any of the respondents received. That includes the Environment Agency, highways, the IDB and South Holan District Council. Conditions have however been recommended, in particular to pick up some issues that have been identified around drainage. So in terms of the acceptability of the proposal, I say we've seen a number of these proposals proposed in the past. And our policies in the local plan recognise that there are a need for some small-scale facilities outside of main urban area. In this case, the proposal itself doesn't lie in an urban area, but it does actually lie inside the settlement boundary of Gosbiton, Risegate and Clough. It's a small-scale facility and therefore needs to be considered against the policies for such within the local plan, which is principally policy seven. That requires the applicant to demonstrate that the proposal is suitably located in terms of source and end use. And again, there's, a case has been made by the applicant here is that the site in this context is considered reasonably well-located to support our access to markets within Spalding, Bourne, Donnington, as well as slightly further afield at Sleaford. The site itself, as I say, is a site that has previously been used for its uses akin to that that's proposed and is within this area that has been identified as potentially for, well, within the settlement boundary. So an expectation that development or redevelopment of this previously developed plot would be acceptable. So the need case in principle, officers are satisfied that whilst there'd been no demonstrable evidence submitted to demonstrate that they've looked at alternative sites per se, we accept that higher rents and demand for plots for these types of facilities on more established and retail, commercial sites can make it difficult for facilities to be found in such locations. That said, they still need to be located close to source. And in this particular case, given its proximity to those markets, officers are satisfied that would be a reasonable distance. In terms of the impacts that have been raised, both through the representations from the members of the public, such as visual impact, noise and traffic, officers are satisfied that with measures proposed such as conditions, they can be dealt with and brought to an acceptable level. That would include controlling operations inside the building to ensure that those noise impacts are limited and also that the types of tools be limited to make sure that they are not hydraulic or high noise inducing. So the officer's recommendation at the end of the report is that the planning permission be granted subject to the conditions set out from page eighty-one.
Thank you for the introduction. We have no speakers, so I'm therefore going to open to committee. Councillor Ashton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This appears to me to be a really good opportunity to achieve a betterment of the site. I've been studying the Google Street View and Google Earth here around the corner. It clearly is not a pretty site at the moment. And whilst obviously there are all going to be concerns over the potential use, I'm very pleased to see at condition five, that requirement, that a detailed landscaping scheme, the details which we've seen here in the presentation. Among other things, it's a fantastic opportunity to make this somewhat more pleasant than it currently is. And appreciating that this kind of activity has, if Google is anything to go by, has taken place at this site in, on previous occasions with evidence which suggests very little regulatory control. So if this is an opportunity to have this site operating to the highest standards, to modern standards, with environmental controls and everything else in place, then I'm happy to move the recommendation, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Ashton, you're my, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a couple of small points. Having spent probably longer than I should have done scrabbling around scrapyards, I think it's exactly the same as councillor Ashton says. It seems a good opportunity to improve what looks, to all intents and purposes, like a very unpleasant-looking site at the moment. Is there any recommendation as to how high they are allowed to stack vehicles before they're removed? I understand, obviously, they're not doing a crushing operation because that would require a whole different deal. But the average scrapyard, and I mean, they're fairly precariously wobbled, are in stacks of three or four. And that's going to stick way over a two-metre fence and not going to be a vast improvement because they obviously stay there some length of time. So is it possible to ascertain whether or not that's included in the conditions? Thank you.
Mr Willis.
Yes, can confirm, we've recommended condition eleven. On page eighty-three does require that vehicle shells, both pre-treated and de-purled, shall be no more than one, and height of any stockpiles no higher than two metres. So in line with the proposed fencing height.
Okay. There is a need for society to actually recycle, remove vehicles, older vehicles from the road at some point. So these facilities do need to be located at some point somewhere within the world, whether it's UK, wherever. This seems like an opportunity, a good opportunity, to clear up what is an untidy site and actually start doing processing on a localised basis. Who knows, twenty thirty's coming along and we're all supposed to be buying electric vehicles. If we're all going to be rushing out and buying electric vehicles, that to me implies that there'll be an awful lot more vehicles, that there will have to be recycled, disposed of, or whatever. And we do need to find an allocation somewhere within society, the world, to actually put these vehicles. these vehicles. On the basis that all the various consultees have come back and said that they don't have issues with this site, I'm quite happy to second the recommendations so that at least we can make a contribution to the, the bits and pieces going forwards. Councillor Mrs Overton, would you wish to speak?
Thank you very much. I can see the points that have just been made. Just a few questions, if I might. You did say no alternative sites had been considered or at least, you know, evidence of alternative sites being considered and yet there are, and I don't know that area so well, but in North Cistina, for example, we're well oversubscribed with industrial land that's allocated and not in use. And I'm just thinking, you know, I would have liked to have seen that, I would have liked them to have checked, is there not an industrial area where this industry could be put, rather than a small village opposite some bungalows? So, I would have liked to have seen that and I, I'm not sure why we didn't ask for it, you know, it is, if it's a requirement, you know, it should have been put forward. And I would suggest we actually ask for it, although I, I see the proposals. The other question is about how we enforce low intensity. I did get the point about making sure that the tools were not noisy, but I mean, does that mean no metal cutting? You know, what if you've got to cut a door off in order to get, or something off in order to get to the thing you want to take out, you know, if you, I'm just, is there some way in which we're controlling that? And I know you've put there that there's some controls, but I'd just like to, what about if they just come for a little extension, you know, we've got permission for this much, can we just have permission for something else? And these things can grow like topsy. So, I would like to make sure that the conditions are really strong on making sure that there's not going to be an adverse impact on those people living in little bungalows opposite, for example. And then, the, no, I think that's covered it actually. Yeah, what kind of restrictions have we got on the growth, if they want to grow and become a large operation, whereas if they started on an industrial site, obviously there'd be much more capacity for that? Thank you.
Mr Willis.
Thank you, Chairman. And I guess on the first point, yeah, as I said, the applicant has submitted within their statement that they looked at alternative sites within more urban areas, but on the, on the basis of finding a site that's large enough to accommodate them on those kind of established estates that you've talked about, the difficulty is quite often they come with a higher rent value and given the low value, if you like, of some of the, the elements of this business and high turnover, it makes it difficult. Now, we haven't sought a quantitative or, you know, evidence of a, which lots, plots have been looked at. However, I think, you know, we've seen and we generally accept that that's a principle we've seen apply elsewhere, which is why we've typically seen these types of facilities move away from those more established business parks or industrial estates where they're higher value, higher commercial interest. So, you know, say, within the local plan, our policy accepts that there will be certain types of facility that therefore necessitate different locations and it is then a judgement about how far or reasonable they are to those markets. And I say, within this particular location and the fact that it's within a settlement boundary and a pre-develop-, a previously developed site, we're satisfied that this facility would only have a relatively small catchment and it's, it's quite well located for those areas. In terms of the noise impacts and controls on the operations, again, within the report, you will see officers have recommended conditions on page 84. There's a noise level condition that requires noise levels to be no higher than 5 dB above the existing background. That's a fairly standard condition which would ensure that noise levels don't result in an unacceptable adverse impact. So, in the event that there's evidence of noise levels continually causing a harm, then we can monitor that and ensure that that's complied with. And if that's not, then look at alternative measures the applicant needs to operate. In addition to that, we've also required that the de-purution and dismantling facilities themselves, as I say, take place within the building, roller shutter doors and again, defined what we require in terms of hand and power tools within condition 16. So, satisfied given the nature of these operations and certainly what we've seen elsewhere, that they are reasonable controls that would ensure that the operation is relatively low impact.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further speakers, I'm going to offer the recommendation to grant permission to the meeting. It's been proposed by Councillor Ashton, seconded by myself, that the permission is granted. All in favour, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, that's eight for. Those against? Abstentions, two. That's a clear majority, so therefore that one is granted. So, normally I would say thank you for attending and it's time to go, but I believe Mr McBride would like to give you an opportunity, although we've been fairly prompt this morning with delivering the agenda, and he's going to give you an opportunity for a day out.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just ensure that the, the streamings turned off? Okay, thanks. Yeah, just a couple of advanced.